Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, January 29th, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am your Deputy City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 1323. Resolution Amending Resolution 744, effective November 9th, 2018, Providing for an Agreement with Various Community Organizations For Operational and Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, And/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities For the Benefit of the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh At a Cost Not to Exceed $365,000, So as to Transfer Funds Within a Job Number, Trinity Temple Church, Homewood Concerned Citizens Council, $2,500, And Putting That in Operation Better Block, Homewood Development Collaborative, And Veteran Arts and Housing Collaborative, $10,000, and Putting That Money to the Project Love Coalition, And Catholic Charities, the Rosalia Center, $2,500, and Putting That Money to Catholic Charities. Bill Number 1324. Resolution Amending Resolution 747, effective November 2018, Providing for an Agreement with Various Community Organizations For Operational and Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, And/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities For the Benefit of the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh At a Cost Not to Exceed $735,000, So as to Transfer Within the Job Number, The Name Change shall read as follows: Washington Heights Food Bank, $2,500, And Putting That Money to the St. Mary of the Mount Church, Washington Heights Food Bank. Bill Number 1325. Resolution Amending Resolution 746, effective November 2018, Resolution Providing for the Filing of a Community Development Statement By the City of Pittsburgh with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development For Grant in Connection with the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program For Name Changes Within the Mayor's Office, And the Changes Shall Now Read: Veteran Arts and Housing Collaborative, $10,000, And Placing That Money to the Project Love Coalition, The Catholic Charities, Rosalia Center, $2,500, And Placing That Money to Catholic Charities, And a Name Change Within City Council, Washington Heights Food Bank To St. Mary of the Mount Church, Washington Heights Food Bank. Bill Number 1326. Ordinance Accepting a New Street Name, Legacy Way, In the 22nd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh As Per Recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The Following Street Name was Approved by CPAC in 2012. The Name Listed in the Ordinance Shall Be Made Official In accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title 4, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Name and Addressing. Bill Number 1327. Resolution Accepting a New Street Name, Carlo Drive, In the 4th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh As Per Recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The Following Street Name was Approved by CPAC in July 2018. The Name Listed in this Ordinance Shall Be Made Official In accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title 4, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Name and Addressing. Bill Number 1328. Resolution Accepting a New Street Name, Ursuline Drive, In the 8th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh As Per Recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The Following Street Name was Approved by CPAC in July of 2018. The Name Listed in the Ordinance Shall Be Made Official In accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title 4, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Name and Addressing. Councilwoman Darlene Harris presents Bill Number 1329. Resolution Providing that the City of Pittsburgh Enter into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contract With UPMT Mercy in Connection with the Implementation And Evaluation of Medical Examinations And Related Tests and Procedures For the Civil Service Commission's Medical Examination Program For Current and Perspective Employees for Employment and Promotion, Providing for the Cost Not to Exceed $1,600,000. Bill Number 1330. Resolution Amending Resolution 363 of 2015, Which Authorized the City of Pittsburgh To Enter into a Professional Services Agreement With Aon Risk Services For the Purpose of Securing Excess Workers' Compensation Insurance Coverage By Increasing the Cost by $24,000 For 120 Additional Days of Service. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill Number 1331. Resolution Amending Resolution 191 of March 2018, Entitled Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Cooperation Agreement With the URA of Pittsburgh For the Administration of Certain Projects and Programs And Providing for the Payment Not to Exceed $3,286,320 By Including an Additional Economic Development and Housing Line Item For an Amount Not to Exceed $54,000 And the Total Cost thereof by the Same Amount Not to Exceed $3,340,320. This is for all Council Districts. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1332. Resolution Providing for Contract or Use of Existing Contracts or Agreements Providing for the Planning, Design, Repairs, Maintenance, Improvements, Emergencies, Operations, And/or the Purchase of Materials, Equipment, and Supplies In Connection with the Production of the Complete Streets' Design Guidelines and Associated Projects. Bill Number 1338. Ordinance Amending, Supplementing, and Correcting the Pittsburgh Code Title 2, Fiscal, Article 1, Administrative, Chapter 219, Operating Budget, So as to Add Contract and Bid Information Requirements to Fiscal Impact Statements And to Further Correct Numbering and Formatting. This Bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith and co-sponsored by Councilwoman Erica Strausberger, Deb Gross, and Darlene Harris. Council President Bruce Kraus presents Bill Number 1333. Resolution Appointing Santiago Garcis as the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance. Bill Number 1334. Resolution Appointing Alex Matthews to Serve as a Member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a Term to Expire, January 31st, 2022. Bill Number 1335. Resolution Appointing Cheryl Ganey as a Member of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh with a Term to Expire, December 31st, 2024. Bill Number 1336. Resolution Appointing Alexander LaRocco as a Member of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh with a Term to Expire, December 31st, 2024. And Bill Number 1337. Communication from Jen Olzinger, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approvals on behalf of the Department of Innovation and Performance for Catherine Grober and the Department of Public Works for Greg Wagner per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in March 2008. That concludes the reading of the legislation today. Thank you and have a great day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh's City Council for today, Tuesday, January 29th, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mrs. Harris, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor, Mrs. Kell Smith, Ms. Strausberger, Mr. Kraus President, five members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And then we ask that you would please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Our next order of business is proclamations. This morning, we have a very special proclamation to be presented, so Beth, can I have you and all of your invited guests, please come up and join us? And don't be shy. Please come up. Chief, will you join us? Thanks.
I have one I'm doing for Teresa.
Oh, you're gonna do Teresa. Hey, wow. Good morning. Well, you brought the whole chamber with you. Morning, how are you? Nice to see you again. Come on up, Beth. Don't be shy. Hey, don't be shy. We won't bite. You can move in. And if you stand here that way, we'll be able to get you on camera. That's okay. It's your day. You know that. It's gonna be your day. So I had the honor of meeting Beth my first year in council when I was selected by then-President Doug Shields to chair the Public Safety Committee. And I did everything in my power to educate myself about our different public safety departments, and of course, one of them being the Oversight Bureau here. And so I introduced myself to Beth, and I asked her she would come to the office and help educate me. And I don't know how many weeks we spent, but it was a very long time. And we forged a fast and firm friendship that has lasted now 12 years. I don't know where that time went, but it did. And we don't look a day older either, at all. But so it was with great honor and privilege that I was asked to present this proclamation to Beth for 20 years? Yeah, 20 years since 1999, right? Yeah, 20 years of service to the city. And I believe you were the longest-serving professional in this capacity in the United States? Is that right? Yeah, quite an honor.
And I'm just getting warmed up.
And you're just getting warmed up. We can count on that. So without further ado, let me present this proclamation to you, Beth, for Elizabeth Pittenger Day in Pittsburgh. So whereas Elizabeth C. Pittenger has served as the Executive Director of Pittsburgh's Independent Citizens Police Review Board since January 19th of 1999 and is considered to be the longest-serving police oversight professional in the country. And whereas Ms. Pittenger has a long history of public service, including appointments to the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations spanning from 1994 through 2014, serving as Chair 1999 through 2000, the President's Committee on Mental Retardation, now known as the President's Committee for People with Intellectual Disabilities, from 1994 to 2001, the former Allegheny County MHMR Board, the Pennsylvania Right to Education Task Force. And whereas Ms. Pittenger has endeavored throughout her career to eliminate bias in public policy, thereby fostering a community of inclusion, and has received several awards and commendations, including recognition as a Woman of Justice by the Women and Girls Foundation of Southwestern Pennsylvania and as a Classic Events Awardee for Legal Excellence. And whereas Ms. Pittenger has assisted City Council through briefings and advisories related to police policy matters such as officer-involved domestic violence, preparation for the G-20 Summit, secondary employment of police officers, motor vehicle pursuits, and related police community issues. And whereas on Ms. Pittenger's watch, the Independent Citizen Council Review Board has remained steadfast in its impartial mission, having convened 212 public business meetings, processed more than 5,000 complaints, and conducted more than 100 public hearings. And whereas Ms. Pittenger has facilitated partnerships between the Independent CPRB and community interests, including the Black Political Empowerment Project, the Pittsburgh Public Schools, Pittsburgh Federation of Teachers, Pittsburgh Unit of the NAACP, the Community Police Relations Group convened by the U.S. Attorney's Office for the Western District of Pennsylvania. And whereas Ms. Pittenger has adopted her role with the CPRB as a lifestyle, assuring her ability to the media and public wherever, whenever, a question arises regarding community police relations. And whereas in addition to being a public servant, Ms. Pittenger likes to read, walk her dogs, target shoot, and jump out of perfectly good airplanes. That one threw me for a loop. I didn't expect that one to come up. So now, therefore, be it resolved that this Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize, congratulate, and thank Beth for her 20 years of service to the Independent Citizens Police Review Board and for her continuing commitment to a safe and healthy relationship between the members of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police and the citizens and visitors of our city. And be it even further resolved that this Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, January 29th, 2019 to be Elizabeth C. Pittenger Day here in the City of Pittsburgh. We have a motion in a second, please. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. I love you.
Yes, you do. You better.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. President. Honorable Members of Council, Madam Clerk, and my dear Pittsburgh family. Our Chair, Dr. Emma Lucas-Darby, Chair of the Citizen Police Review Board, our Vice Chair, Mr. Waters is here, and member Sister Patrice Hughes. I have my family here too. The two lads in the back there, Zachary and Cory and... and Mary. And a remarkable backbone of our operation here is our staff. Ms. Michelle Gamble, Sherry Bridgett, Stephanie Dorman, Michael Aew, and Ms. Gaskin, you're here. And two of our most esteemed partners, Chief of Police Scott Schubert and Stu, Mr. Stewart. We call him Stu. This is really quite an honor. And I have to say that the support that this Council, current members and predecessors, has been so important to the Board because we're not always the favorite action in town. But your support and your wisdom, having been shared with us on many occasions, has been extremely important to the ability of the Board to continue to fulfill its impartial and objective mission. And I personally have benefited tremendously from the wisdom that you have shared with me and certainly from the many blessings I've had personally. You know, the courage from my dad, the fortitude of my mom, and certainly the faith of my granny has given me an opportunity to serve this awesome, remarkable city of Pittsburgh. Something I never dreamed of, and it has been such an honor. My service with the Human Relations Commission, coupled with this, has given me a view of life in our city. It is truly an amazing place. The people are warm. The people care about each other. We have little family feuds and fights that go on, but at the end of the day, we have each other's back. And in the role that I have here with the Independent Citizen Police Review Board, I have seen and I'm aware of thousands of men and women who have served as City of Pittsburgh police officers, many of whom we will never know their names because they were here for all the right reasons. They have compassion, integrity, honor, and they protect our city with no question of integrity. We're here because human nature is that there are some people who maybe shouldn't be a police officer. And if we can assist the Bureau in creating systemic support systems within the Bureau, then we've accomplished something significant, to support those who may be struggling, to identify those who might want to find another career, and to offer our advice and recommendations related to public policy. So I'm just delighted. I'm humbled. And I just think we're very, very fortunate to have this city of Pittsburgh. Thank you very much.
I want to say that the City of Pittsburgh should be proud of itself for what it does in supporting us. Our work is not easy, but we stand for fairness and we represent citizens of this city. And we will continue to do that. As Ms. Pittenger said, it's not always easy, but we want to do what is right and what is fair. So thank you for all your support, and we will continue on our way and do what you have charged us to do. Thank you.
May I have all members for the photograph, please?
Thanks, everybody.
Ooh, they're gonna break it up over there. So I'm doing a proclamation for Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith. She couldn't be here. Something had come up this morning, but she decided to have me do it because I'm a good Catholic and I never do anything wrong, so... She thought it'd be fitting. This is Sister Patrice, everybody. Sister Patrice and I go way back. She actually took care of my mom in a place that, you know, the Catholic Diocese runs, which was a very good place, like the schools, so... Whereas the 45th Annual Celebration of National Catholic Schools Week will be held January 27th to February 2nd, 2019. And whereas the schools of the Catholic Diocese of Pittsburgh play an important role in building faith, developing communities, and in promoting service. And Catholic schools in the City of Pittsburgh place high expectancy upon all teachers to motivate the children to achieve to the best of their ability by seeking academic excellence, moral courage, and strong faith in the light of social and cultural change. And when dedicated teachers base their methods on a love for the church, they create an atmosphere that is communal and service-oriented. And whereas in Catholic schools, educators and students share the qualities of learners, servants, and leaders, which is what it makes Catholic schools to succeed. And now, therefore, be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Catholic Diocese of Pittsburgh and the Catholic schools that serve our city residents for teaching students to become future leaders, faithful disciples, and enriched citizens in our communities. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, January 27th through February 2nd, 2019 to be Catholic Schools Week in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Sister. Congratulations.
I have to say that this is truly an honor. I was not aware that this proclamation was going to be made until I arrived here because I serve on the Citizens Police Review Board. But having spent most of my life in Catholic education, I am delighted and I'm especially glad to be back in the City of Pittsburgh where I grew up and served about 10 to 12 years in Catholic schools here before I went to Washington, D.C. And there I worked on a national level. And it was just wonderful to see, despite the number of schools which are decreasing, unfortunately, I keep reminding the Lord that I'm not asking for 5.7 billion. I'd just like a few million to help us with operating our schools because the cost of tuition is getting beyond many people of modest means. So I speak on behalf of those who have been the recipients, myself included, for the wonderful education. When I look at my past, what I was prepared to do was as a result of Catholic schools. So thank you for recognizing the contribution that many people make at a great sacrifice. I could be making much more money if I were in the public schools, but my head and heart belong in Catholic schools. So thank you very much. Most of my friends remind me I was born political, so I'll be happy. I previously served on the...
There's no politics in the shirt.
No. Court shall appoint a citizen investigating committee to make a written report to the Court. If the committee reports the charges well-founded, council shall sit as court and the president, judge of the Court of Common Please shall preside. The city solicitor shall serve as prosecuting attorney." This isolates the city solicitor away from, against the accused officer. In the hypothetical case of the current president of council, Mr. Bruce Kraus, in an impeachment trial, Mr. Kraus would be prosecuted by the city solicitor, Ms. Yvonne Hilton. In the hypothetical, Mr. Kraus would get no help from Solicitor Hilton. It is unlikely, to remain hypothetical.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Miller. May we have our next speaker, please?
Good morning, Ms. Brown. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. And everything that Dr. Miller said is true, that incompetency, all of yous act like that. You may say, now, here she comes, how can she say it? Because I done watched this. I watched this for ten years. Ten years this council has went down. Ten years. And Ms. Harris, I'm looking at you, because you started it when you made sure for eight years the post-agendas and the pee agendas were never published. Do you understand, citizen? For eight years, no official notice. Only way we found out is when they would say it at night. They would say it at night. And then sometimes it wouldn't show. You remember, for a whole month, they didn't, almost a whole month, they did not repeat the city council meetings. Do you understand that you're only getting half of what's happening in this room? Sometimes you look at me, like once a woman said, I seen you, Ms. Brown, and you were, you were really upset. You know why I'm upset? Because this get, don't you get, I think you might get, each of yous fifty-five thousand dollars, or is it sixty? And you have a meeting where only one person come, that's Kraus, against my community, saying how it's good for my community and it wasn't. We can't even get a bus from the top of the hill to take the seniors to the bottom to the hospital. Yes, I'm, I'm angry. I stay angry because you're getting paid and won't come to a meeting. You have him to make this whole city, we're at the convenience of Mrs. Gross, and she's always late. He takes and puts her, puts us before her. And then when I come to speak, I sit there the whole meeting. I can't speak because he put her first. He don't even do protocol. Listen, let me tell you something. When I bring my babies, my little, my beautiful babies, I get hard at, you're not gonna keep doing it, and you need to stop it. You, every one of us, speak up when he's wrong. Point of order. Don't let him take our rights away. I have no civil rights in here. I can be chased out like a dog when he say, get out. I'm gonna stop it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. May we have our next speaker, please?
Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. My name is Allison Keating. I live in Manchester. I wanted to speak on the Transit Shelter Bill. I share council's concerns about contracting, which I believe was the only thing that was really discussed at Standing Committee. To me, that shows a lack of concern for good uni, good city government union jobs, when I don't feel it really needs to be outsourced, or at the, you know, at the least, perhaps there could be an agreement with Port Authority. They have, they, they, they do their own advertising on the buses and the shelters in the suburbs. So I believe that's a missed opportunity there. And then in addition to that, I'm disappointed to see the Shatree Committee Commission's money being limited to a hundred thousand dollars for what, what will likely be a twenty-year contract. And I think that's actually all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Okay. Do we have any further speakers this morning wishing to address City Council? Any further speakers? Okay. Seeing no further, excuse me, seeing no further speakers, that will conclude public comment, take us into presentation of papers. Our first committee is our Committee on Finance and Law. Our Chair is Councilman Burgess. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning. No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, your Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number thirteen twenty-three, Resolution Amending Resolution Number seven forty-four, As to Transfer Funds Within a Job Number Shall Now Read, Trinity Temple Church, Homewood Concerned Citizens Council to Operation Better Block Homewood Development Collaborative and Veterans Art and Housing Collaborative to Project Love Coalition and Catholic Charities Rosalia Center to Catholic Charities. Bill Number thirteen twenty-four, Resolution Amending Resolution Number seven forty-seven, As to Transfer Within the Job Number Name Change Shall Read as Follow, Washington Heights Ecumenial Food Bank to Saint Mary of the Mount Church, Washington Heights Ecumenial Food Bank. Bill Number thirteen twenty-five, Resolution Amending Resolution Number seven forty-six, Name Changes Within the Mayor's Office to Now Read, Veterans Art and Housing Collaborative to Project Love Coalition and Catholic Charities Rosalia Center to Catholic Charities, and a name change within City Council, Washington Heights Ecumenial Food Bank to Saint Mary of the Mount Church, Washington Heights Ecumenial Food Bank. Bill Number thirteen twenty-six, Ordinance Accepting a New Name, a New Street Name Legacy Way in the Twenty-second Ward of the City as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in two thousand and twelve. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title Four, Public Places and Property, Chapter four twenty, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Bill, Bill Number thirteen twenty-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Resolution Accepting a New Street Name, Ursuline Drive in the Eighth Ward of the City as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in July of two thousand and eighteen. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title Four, Public Places and Property, Chapter four twenty, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
Mr. Kraus.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Harris presents Bill Number thirteen oh nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with Ceridian Human Capital Management, Inc., for a citywide time and attendance system and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed one million, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Bill Number thirteen twenty-nine, Resolution Providing that the City enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with UPMC Mercy in connection with the administration and evaluation of medical examinations and related tests and procedures for the Civil Service Commission's Medical Examination Program for current and prospective employees, for employment and promotion, and providing for the payment of costs thereof not to exceed one million, six hundred thousand dollars. Bill Number thirteen thirty, Resolution Amending Resolution Number three sixty-three, which authorizes the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional service agreement with Aon Risk Services for the purpose of securing excess workers' compensation insurance coverage by increasing the cost by twenty-four thousand dollars for one hundred and twenty additional days of services.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Miss President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number thirteen thirty-one, Resolution Amending Resolution Number one ninety-one, entitled, "Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Corporation Agreement with the URA for the Administration of Certain Projects and Programs and Providing for the Payment of the Cost thereof not to exceed three million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars by including an additional economic development housing line item for an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand dollars, and the total cost thereof by the same amount not to exceed three million, three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars." Council District of.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number thirteen thirty-two, Resolution Providing for a Contract or the Use of Existing Contracts and/or Agreements Providing for the Planning, Design, Repairs, Maintenance, Improvements, Emergencies, Operations, and/or the Purchase of Materials, Equipment, and Supplies in Connection with the Production of the Complete Street Design Guidelines and Associated Projects. Bill Number thirteen thirty-eight, Ordinance Amending Supplementing and Correcting the Pittsburgh Code at Title Two, Fiscal Article One, so as to add contract and bid information requirements to fiscal impact statements and to further correct numbering and formatting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair has a number of papers. First, I'd like to present a communication from our Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget.
Council President Kraus presents Bill Number thirteen thirty-seven, Communication from Jennifer Oldsinger, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay approvals on behalf of the Department of Innovation and Performance for Catherine Grober and the Department of Public Works for Greg Wagner for the acting pay policy revised in March, two thousand and eight.
Thank you. May I have a motion to receive and file? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much. I have four appointments that will require council approval.
Bill Number thirteen thirty-three, Resolution Appointing Santiago Garciz as the Department of, as the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance. Bill Number thirteen thirty-four, Resolution Appointing Alex Matthews to serve as a member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a term to expire January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Bill Number thirteen thirty-five, Resolution Appointing Cheryl Gani as the Member of the Housing Authority of the City with a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Bill Number thirteen thirty-six, Resolution Appointing Alexander B. LaRocco as a Member of the Housing Authority of the City with a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What is the, the desire of council? We have four appointments requiring council approval. Councilwoman Harris?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we interview.
Yep, I would too. So we have a second, a motion in a second. Do we have discussion on the motion to interview the four candidates? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much. I'll work with the Clerk's Office to have these appointments scheduled as quickly as possible. That takes us into unfinished business, and without unfinished business before the council, we'll go into reports of committee for final action, and we will begin with Councilman Reverend Rookie V. Burgess, who is the Chair of our Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number thirteen eighteen, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for January twenty-third with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number twelve forty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Pharrell and Rysinger in an Amount Not to Exceed Ten Thousand, Two Hundred and Twenty-eight Dollars and Sixty Cent for Professional Legal Services Regarding a Police Matter. Bill Number twelve forty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Snyder, Harrison, Segal, and Lewis in an Amount Not to Exceed Eight Thousand, Two Hundred and Twenty-three Dollars and Ninety-Two Cent for Professional Services in Connection with a Police Matter. Bill Number twelve forty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman, Thomas, and Battle, PLCC, in an Amount Not to Exceed Seventeen Thousand, Five Hundred and Forty-One Dollars and Sixty-Six Cent for Professional Legal Services Regarding a Police Matter. Bill Number twelve eighty-three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number seven ninety-seven, by Increasing Park Reconstruction Regional Asset District Parks by Fifty-four Thousand, Two Hundred and Ninety Dollars from Nine Hundred and Sixty-five Thousand Dollars to One Million, Nineteen Thousand, Two Hundred and Ninety Dollars. Bill Number twelve eighty-four, Resolution Amending Resolution Number fourteen, Realigning a Total of Four Thousand, Three Hundred and Twenty-Two Thousand Dollars, Four Million, Three Hundred and Twenty-Two Thousand Dollars Between Various Accounts Within the Two Thousand and Eighteen Operating Budget. This transfer is necessary for the Two Thousand and Eighteen Close to meet final expenditures for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. Bill Number twelve eighty-five, Resolution to Authorize the Direct and Incurring of Non-Electorial Debt Through the Issuing of a Series of General Obligation Bonds of the City in the Maximum Aggregate Amount Sixty-two Million, Four Hundred and Thirty-five Thousand Dollars. Bill Number twelve eighty-six, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Finance to Enter into an Agreement with Clark Hill to Serve as Bond Counsel for the Purpose of Rendering Any and All Necessary Opinions with Respect to the Bonds and Preparing Such Additional Documents as May Be Necessary. Total Cost Shall Not Exceed Thirty-six Thousand, One Hundred and Twenty-five Dollars and Shall Be Paid Using Proceeds. One so as to Add Contract and Bid Information Requirements to Fiscal Impact Statements and to Further Correct Numbering and Formating.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair has a number of papers. First, I'd like to present a communication from our Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget.
Council President Kraus presents Bill number thirteen thirty-seven. Communication from Jennifer Oldsinger, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay approvals on behalf of the Department of Innovation and Performance for Catherine Grober and the Department of Public Works for Greg Wagner for the Acting Pay Policy Revised in March two thousand and eight.
Thank you. May I have a motion to receive and file?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much. I have four appointments that will require council approval.
Bill number thirteen thirty-three. Resolution Appointing Santiago Garciz as the Department of, as the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance. Bill number thirteen thirty-four. Resolution Appointing Alex Matthews to serve as a member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a term to expire January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Bill number thirteen thirty-five. Resolution Appointing Cheryl Gani as the Member of the Housing Authority of the City with a Term to Expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Bill number thirteen thirty-six. Resolution Appointing Alexander B. LaRocco as a Member of the Housing Authority of the City with a Term to Expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What is the, the desire of council? We have four appointments requiring council approval. Councilwoman Harris?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we interview.
Yep, I would too. So, we have a second, a motion and a second. Do we have discussion on the motion to interview the four candidates? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much. I'll work with the Clerk's Office to have these appointments scheduled as quickly as possible. That takes us into unfinished business, and without unfinished business before the council, we'll go into reports of committee for final action, and we will begin with Councilman Reverend Rookie V. Burgess, who is the Chair of our Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. President.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill number thirteen eighteen. Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for January twenty-third with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number twelve forty-seven. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Pharrell and Rysinger in an amount not to exceed ten thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents for professional legal services regarding a police matter. Bill number twelve forty-eight. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Snyder, Harrison, Segal, and Lewis in an amount not to exceed eight thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-two cents for professional services in connection with the police matter. Bill number twelve forty-nine. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Spillman, Thomas, and Battle, P L C C, in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents for professional legal services regarding a police matter. Bill number twelve eighty-three. Resolution further amending resolution number seven ninety-seven by increasing park reconstruction, regional asset, district parks by fifty-four thousand two hundred and ninety dollars from nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to one million nineteen thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. Bill number twelve eighty-four. Resolution amending resolution number fourteen. Realigning a total of four thousand three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, four million three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars between various accounts within the two thousand and eighteen operating budget. This transfer is necessary for the two thousand and eighteen close to meet final expenditures for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. Bill number twelve eighty-five. Resolution to authorize the direct and incurring of non-electorial debt through the issuing of a series of general obligation bonds of the city in the maximum aggregate amount sixty-two million four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Bill number twelve eighty-six. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of Finance to enter into an agreement with Clark Hill to serve as bond counsel for the purpose of rendering any and all necessary opinions with respect to the bonds and preparing such additional documents as may be necessary. Total cost shall not exceed thirty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and shall be paid using proceeds from the debt issuance. Bill number twelve ninety-one. Resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter two-ten of the City Code, the mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from Alcoa Corporation for five thousand dollars to be deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Committee on Finance and Law. Do we have further discussion on any of the bills? Then seeing none, the bills, oh, you do, Councilwoman?
Excuse me?
Sure.
So, I'm speaking to the bond issuance twelve eighty-five and twelve eighty-six. Did I get those numbers right?
Uh, yes.
Uh, so, I have been struggling with this one since last week, and I think I said some of these comments last weekend that I really want us to keep in front of us not only the amount of debt that is on the city's books, but the debt burden that is on our citizens' pocketbooks, right? So, it's not just the city's books and balance sheet that we're looking at, but how we're going to be taking out a significant amount of long-term debt across many authorities in order to rebuild both above-ground and underground. Yes, we all are looking forward to park improvements. Yes, we know that we have to take care of our municipal assets, especially our city facilities where our employees work. And yes, many constituents want those potholes filled, but we need to be cautious moving forward. This council, I voted no on the forty million dollar bond late last year, and I'm going to vote yes today on the sixty million dollar bond. But know that we also, well, we have to take care of our assets and do these investments for the long term, and we need to spread out those payments so that we don't bear all of the cost on today's pocketbooks and trying to pay as you go. That we are also struggling to fund, as my colleagues have championed, affordable housing in the city, and we're really going to have to figure out where that money's coming from. I also respect the work that Councilwoman Harris is doing to track how many of these capital projects have been borrowed for already. And I think that that's a conversation that I want to continue to have with council members as this bond is being allocated so that we are sure that we are getting the projects completed that were promised and that we are not borrowing multiple times for the same project, right? I mean, that's one of the responsibilities of this council. So, again, I'm grateful to the Councilwoman for, I can see that she has spreadsheets in front of her now on this very topic, and I, I really, I want to just also say thank you to the constituents who gave me feedback on this topic. But I will be voting yes today, even though it did keep me up a little bit last night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harris?
Yes, I'll be voting no on the bond issues because none of this makes any sense when I ask for the paperwork of what we've already spent a hundred million dollars on. Why now the forty million is for a building instead of two hundred at Ross Street, which has been improved. Most of the floors and even outside, the only part that hasn't been done yet is the back of the building, but if you're going to spend that kind of money and pay for a building, uh, for another building, I think it's a waste of taxpayer dollars. And I'm really confused by looking through a number of years of, of tips and, and everything else that we have had on a number of projects. And yet, we're asking for more money for the same projects that haven't even been started. Makes no sense at all unless we have spent the money in the wrong places of the budget in the past years, uh, which should not be happening, especially with the capital funds. So, I will be voting no on Bill eighty-five and eighty-six.
Great, thanks, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further discussion, these bills are now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Councilwoman Kell Smith?
I just, I apologize. I just was clarifying something. I just want to say that I appreciate what my colleagues are doing, and I, I share their concerns about the budget and, and the way we spend money here, but my concern more is that we should really be watching the private dollars that are coming in more than we are controlling, maximizing the public dollars that, that, you know, we can. And I do, I do understand their concerns and, and respect both of them very much, but I want to say for me, I'm more, am concerned, especially, I mean, today, we hear the Shade Tree Commission coming and asking for additional funding instead of putting it into our budget. Well, to me, I have, since I've been here, I feel like we privatize a lot of things, and I really worry about what we're doing with our public dollars more than I worry and, and what we're, and what we're accepting in terms of private dollars and what we're allowing organizations and nonprofits to do in the city, which may be jeopardizing the public's voice in a lot of ways. You know, when we hear Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, I just met with them the other day, and they said they have no interest in privatizing the parks, but yet, I've heard from some of my colleagues that they have intentions to do something similar to that. So, you know, now we hear the Shade Tree Commission, even though the administration gave them an additional twenty thousand dollars, they're not satisfied with that. They want us to give them additional money and control over those dollars. Well, I have concerns with allowing all these groups and all these nonprofits having total control over our housing, our infrastructure, our parks, our trees, and so those are the things that, and, and now our employment programs. So, those are the things I'm worried about, and I, and I know my colleagues share that concern, and we're going to be doing some things to address that, those issues as well. But for me, I'm going to vote in favor of this because my concern is more with the private dollars right now.
Okay, thanks, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Is that your hand, Councilwoman?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I just want to say that nobody's overlooking the private dollars. I am looking at that also in particular of the little pot of money that the nonprofits have on his side with our mayor. There's no transparency when it does not come in front of this council, and if you're going to have private dollars, then they should be also coming through council to have the transparency. We did until two thousand fourteen, I think it was, show what we have gotten from the nonprofit. Since then, it shows zero on our books, and now my understanding is there's a pot of money that is sitting on his side with absolutely no transparency to the people of Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman. So, uh, seeing no further discussion, the bills are now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye. Councilman Burgess?
I, 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 um.
I'm going down the rabbit hole.
I highly respect and appreciate Councilwoman Harris's oversight, and I was not going to say anything, but as Finance Chair, I have to push back a little bit. The fund that the nonprofits gave is no longer being funded by the nonprofits, and although there are agreements with the city in various areas, there is not, to my knowledge, a slush fund. There is not, to my knowledge, a slush fund of money simply sitting there with uncontrolled oversight in the city of Pittsburgh, and I, if there were, I would be the first one to be jumping up and down, saying that that's not good government. And so, although I, I, I understand, I understand there may be different interpretations. I welcome that, but I don't, I don't, I don't want to just leave that in the public realm as if we, after all this time and all this work and all this careful working as a team, I, I cannot let that sort of go by, that there is some, some slush fund of city money being used in the fair, and suggested be used in nefarious ways without council participation. That's just not true. I won't say anything else about it, but I needed to at least say that from my perspective.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Harris?
Yes, I think that the budget director should look a little closer, Ian. It would not go through, start reading the papers and watching what's going on. That's what I mean. Wouldn't come to you, which means no transparency. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, seeing no further discussion, the bills are now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
I on all bills except for twelve eighty-five and twelve eighty-six. I vote no on.
Yep.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
On bills twelve eighty-five and twelve eighty-six, ayes eight, noes one. All others, ayes nine, noes zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills then, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Public Safety Services. Our Chair is Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle. Mr. President.
Thanks, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number thirteen nineteen. Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for January twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number twelve ninety-three. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Hume Family Foundation's Nina Baldwin Fisher Foundation to provide funds to support the creation and support of a domestic violence team housed in the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars for this stated purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Public Safety Services Committee. Further discussion begins with Councilwoman Kell Smith.
I just want to thank everyone involved in this. I think this is such an important issue, and I just really want to thank the very hard work of Director Hisrick, Chief Schubert, the Women's Center and Shelter, and, and all parties involved, and especially the foundation for donating the funding, and I hope that this is something that we can continue long after. And I hope that, you know, honestly, we really wish that there was never a need for it, but I want to thank the folks involved in.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thanks very much. Okay, you've heard the, I'm sorry. The bills are now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bills then will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Ayes nine, noes zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Our next committee of the morning is our Committee on Public Work Services and our Chair, Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill number thirteen twenty. Report of the Committee on Public Works for January twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number twelve thirty-nine. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city, city to enter into a license and operation agreement with H F T Management, Inc., doing business as Gateway Outdoor Advertising for services related to installation, operation, maintenance, and advertising of transit shelters and associated street furniture.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Public Works Services Committee. Is there further discussion on this bill? Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I abstained on this last week, and again, I spent some time since last week talking to the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, and actually got the draft of the contract, so I want to thank them for that, because often when we are voting and being asked to vote to authorize a contract, it doesn't mean that we need to vote to approve the contract. So, and I've been, I've been asking for this kind of cooperation now for a while, so I appreciate their cooperation. And then I talked yesterday with the Assistant Director, and so similarly, this is a situation where, yes, we want better bus shelters. The bus shelters are terrible, and we want people to take the buses, and we definitely need better infrastructure to make it easier for people to take public transit, and nearly half of the shelters aren't even at places where buses stop. It's just, it's a terrible mess, and we want it to happen right away, right? And we don't have the capacity internally to do it right away, but this is exactly what Councilwoman Smith is talking about. This is a privatization contract in that it is basically a franchise for this independent for-profit company to operate and maintain city assets instead of us hiring people to maintain the city assets and spending the money upfront for, to maintain the city assets and to, to not let them get into, and, and yes, they are newly our assets. They weren't our assets ten years ago, they, but they are our assets right now. And I understand that this will expedite those shelters being fixed and being relocated, and we are looking forward to that, but I, on principle, am going to vote no today, and I, because I really want to make this point clear. I think this should have been a public discussion before there was an RFP, and the Councilwoman Smith and I have been talking about this for some time. And so, and we've, we've done some work on it with the other women on council, with Councilwoman Harris and now Councilwoman Strasburger, in talking about how we make these decisions in public and raise the question to our constituents before the adminis, we allow the administration to go ahead and issue an RFP and then come to us only for a final, a preapproval on a contract. I think, and, and again, I'm, I think we'll work out whether we need to do it for each and everything. I'm not saying that council needs to administrate, that Council, Councilwoman Burgess has made that point before, but I do think in this category of contracts, when it is an operate and maintain, especially franchising, basically, where they, this independent company has control of these assets on a ten-year lease, that's what I have right here on my desk. And then this kind of like, you know, oh, it's supposed to be profitable, they're going to pay us money. I actually do trust that Domi is going to manage this project, but I would like to see perhaps a one-year review built into these kinds of contracts.
Each year.
Right? Each year, an annual review. Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. So that we can be sure. This is the slippery slope when, you know, before this administration, before most of these council members were in place, some nearly ten years ago, PWSA put this kind of contract in place for Veolia Corporation. They came in, they operated and maintained the water system, and they did a terrible, horrible job, and we had to fire them and sue them, and we have worse water, and we had destroyed our billing, and we all suffered because of it, and we're still suffering because of it. We're still putting the pieces back in place, and it ended up costing the ratepayers ten million dollars. So, I said the exact same speech pretty much on the, the wall sockets that are supposed to save us money, because it was the same kind of contract, and so I'm totally open to discussion and feedback about when, when is a contract so small that it isn't something to worry about, but I'm just gonna, I, I think we are going to be faced with more of these decisions, and I think that should be a public discussion. So, I'll stop there. Thank you, Councilman.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Excuse me, I have Councilwoman Harris followed by Councilwoman Kell Smith.
And again, I'm not going to say over again everything that Councilwoman Gross had said, but one minute we're saying we're not for privatization, next minute, we're voting for privatization, and nowhere that I'm seeing in that contract would council oversee and be able to vote on this every year. That's one thing I make sure I do with Human Resources, that it always says the council reviews. That used to be basically a plate for anything that went through, and I don't know what's been happening in the last five years, but it sure isn't showing that this. been happening in the last five years, but it sure isn't showing that this will come in front of council and it's not something that our staff couldn't do. And the city also make money on it. So again, I, this is a no vote for me.
Great, thanks, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Kelsmith.
I just want to clarify that there is, is a 10-year contract, but there is an opportunity to review in five years. And I, and I do agree that, you know, it would be nice to see an annual, an annual review because I don't disagree and, and I also think there's times where working with the public-private partnerships makes sense, but I think that's where council wants to have a voice in with, along with working with our constituents. You know, what are you willing to, are you willing to give up your parks and allow a private company come in and manage your parks? So, or do you want to keep those spaces, you know, your public? Or do you care more about the bus shelter that, you know, is not in every, every area of your, of your neighborhood, but are important to the people that ride, you know, that have the ridership? You know, what are, what are the priorities for our community to make sure that we really fight hard to keep public? To me, parks is one of the biggest ones. And, you know, the whole issues that we have around trees, there, there's some issues that we have here that we need to address. And I think that's the conversation that we have to have and I'm willing to have that with, with our colleagues. And honestly, I think sometimes it's unfortunate, some of these contracts come before us when you have to make that decision because something is in such bad disrepair already. And so I think that's the case with some, with some of our bus shelters. They're in such bad condition that if we wait and don't do this now, I don't know what, it would be like for people that do have to wait in this. And we have places where they're not and that they're going to put some in for people that do need them. So I think that there's a lot to be said for this, this whole process and I've said that since I've been here, but I'm glad to see my colleagues are now also saying some of the same things and that maybe together we can work on addressing those issues.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Coghill.
Yes, in the spirit of not wanting to privatize every little thing and for me, I just always think back to, and I've heard Councilwoman, you know, Harris talk about the asphalt plant, you know? I mean, by privatizing that, it's nice not to have to worry about it. It's nice not to, you know, to put it in somebody else's hands, but that person typically doesn't do as good a job because they're not as emotionally connected to whatever you're privatizing. And certainly it costs more money in the end, you know, just as, say, for instance, these shelters, if we were to have our own people do it, we would earn just as much money, we would think.
More.
Probably more and create jobs. So, so in the spirit, and I'll, I'll vote no on that also if you let me know the bill number. And, you know, I think we should be very careful in subbing everything out and privatizing in the future.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, then the bills are now ready for final action. And all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when the names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
No on 1239. Aye on everything else.
It's the only bill.
Oh, no.
Ms. Gross.
No.
Mrs. Harris.
No.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus President.
Aye.
Ayes six, noes three.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Human Resources. Our Chair is Councilwoman Darlene Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Harris presents Bill Number 1321, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for January 23, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1292, Resolution authorizing the mayor and Director of Human Resources and Civil Service Commission to enter into an agreement with Willis Towers Watson for services related to supporting the city with development and negotiations of employee benefits that are provided to city employees for a sum not to exceed $1,116,000 over four years and for the payment of cost thereof.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Human Resource Committee. Do we have further discussion on the bill? Okay, seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action. And all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, your hand's up?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have discussion. Councilwoman Harris.
I will be voting on this bill and as you remember, the money from the 2019 operating budget was myself and Councilwoman Rudyak to put in place for 2011, 2012. Billboard tax with a set aside for police vehicles, so that's where the money should be coming from. It's just, I don't know where it is in court, but I wish it would, they would move it along because I believe as of right now, the city should be getting over $20 million. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Harris. The bills are now, seeing no further discussion, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of this bill will vote aye when the names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus President.
Aye.
Ayes nine, noes zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, having received the legally required number of votes, is at last pass. And our final committee of the morning is our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs and our Chair is Councilman Corey O'Connor. Thank you, Councilmen.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1322, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for January 23, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1294, Resolution authorizing a corporation agreement providing for the transfer of funds not to exceed $6,650,000 to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase of vehicles, equipment, and accessories for use by the City Department of and authorities.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. Further discussion starts with Councilwoman Harris.
Yes, sorry about that, but my little speech that I gave a couple minutes ago was really for 1294.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, seeing no further discussion, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus President.
Aye.
Ayes nine, noes zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, then, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. That takes us into motions and resolutions. I have just a few brief meeting announcements. A cablecast post-agenda discussion on employee ownership is scheduled for this afternoon at 1:30 PM. Council will meet tomorrow, of course, Wednesday, January 30 at 10 AM for our standing committee meeting here in council chambers. Also tomorrow afternoon at 1:30, there is an executive session scheduled as it relates to city legal matters. And please note that the cablecast post-agenda discussion, which was originally scheduled for next Tuesday, February 5 at 1:30, has been canceled. Councilwoman, do you wish to make comment?
Yes, I just want to say that, first of all, I want to thank Councilman Coghill for reading my proclamation, presenting my proclamation for Catholic Schools Week. I apologize to St. Phillips and to Catholic Schools and to council for not being here. My mom fell again yesterday and she was in hospital and she's still in the hospital, but I was with her all night.
I'm sorry.
So I didn't anticipate coming in today, but.
She okay? I'm sorry, okay.
So, we're going to, so I have to go there later, but I just want people, I just want to apologize for not being there and thank Councilman Coghill for presenting the proclamation. But I do want to talk about the, I want to say what a great job our Catholic schools and our area, the job that they do. And they're becoming more and more part of the community in ways that they should have been done for years, you know? And so I just really want to thank them for the work that they're doing and how they excel in many areas. We have a lot of great Catholic schools within the city of Pittsburgh and on the outskirts of the city, which I'd like to see more in the city, but I want to thank them for their work. And I will say that, you know, we have, I canceled a post agenda on the public, or the partnerships within the city of Pittsburgh, but I am going to have that post agenda and we are going to extend it. And we will include people like the Shade Tree Commission and, and other folks that, you know, if they want to question the dollars and, and what's going, what's happening, we'll make sure that we give a public response to a lot of what's been happening here and let the public know and inform the public of the benefits of things that are happening and the concerns that they should have for some of the things that are happening. But I do want to say that this administration has, has allocated more money than they have seen in a while. And so I was kind of surprised to even hear and to start receiving comments and emails. And I understand that people want to control the budget, but that's what we were elected to do. And so if money goes into a general fund and they've already got an increase and the money goes into the general fund, if we so choose to allocate additional funding to that, we can do so if that's what the will of the public is. But that's what we're here to do, represent the will of the public. And so I want to make sure people understand, we're going to watch these partnerships and make sure what the public wants to happen is happening.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just have a brief thank you to the, to Lawrenceville United who had a really great session last night with the FBI about hate crimes and extreme groups. And it was in the Post Gazette today and I would ask if to, for people to read that article and find out more. It was very eye-opening. They had slides of the insignia and the graffiti and the symbols that are, are kind of new and talked about how we have hate groups recruiting members in our city. And alarmingly, using even digital platforms like the games that your kids at home may be playing because they're multi-person and there's advertising on these platforms and there are, it's yet a new way that people are contacting strangers. And so they're recruiting even young children into their ideologies. And so one of the most important points, which is emphasized in the newspaper, is for all of us, yes, to be aware, but also to report. They really, as the FBI agents repeated over and over, they actually are not allowed to go and look for these things unless you, as a citizen, report them to them. So they can't just go on these gaming platforms and try to find hate group members that are doing recruiting unless you observe it and report it. Similarly, the graffiti in your neighborhood, they can't actually come out and just kind of scan neighborhoods looking for graffiti and these patterns, but they are depending on us as citizens to report. And we, we had significant graffiti and instances of, of hate group activity in Lawrenceville following Tree of Life shooting. And so we should all be aware in our neighborhoods and in our daily lives. And so I, again, it was just, it's, you can look up the article and there's also information on the FBI website. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. And similarly, council members, we've all received emails, threatening emails in the past and I collected some a few months ago and shared them with our Public Safety Director. And so again, don't ignore them, don't delete them, report them. And similarly to, to our constituents at home.
NBC covered the meeting this morning as well, Councilwoman. Yeah. Councilwoman Harris.
Yes, some net was on the internet saying I was playing Angry Bird during our last public hearing and I don't even know how to put Angry Bird on my computer, let alone be playing it. I've never played a game during council. You might see it when it comes on or off or me trying to take something off, but never have played a game for any meeting that I've been at. Even till 2 o'clock in the morning when I was on the school board, we sat there and listened. So whoever this was with the Angry Bird, I like to have them come up and show me where it is on the computer. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Kelsmith.
No.
No? Okay, good. Thank you. So with no further discussion from members, may we have a motion to approve our minutes and adjourn our meeting?
Seven seconds.
All in favor? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.